Five weeks old, Diego Rodriguez, firstborn. They're there. They're your buyers.
Who is my father?
Yours. This is your...
My third child. It's a label.
We know three towns are left alone. Nope. Four, when we have full council. Three, when we have make it. I think it's part of the regular room. Yeah, we should. Do you have Mr. Garcia's number? Or Mr. Gander's number? Love his knowledge. That's on the way.
You could always announce that they're on their way. Everybody would know.
Congratulations. Graduating. Any contact? There you go. We're good. We're good.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Mayor, if I may establish form. Diego Madrid.
Here.
Mayor Garcia has an accent. Gloria Rodriguez.
Here.
Jesse Gandra.
Here.
Mayor, we have one.
Go ahead.
First off, we have a presentation. We have a couple of presentations. First one is a presentation on City Pride Sign Program honoring the Socorro High School Bulldogs for the 2009 five-day state basketball championship.
Mayor and Council, it's very fitting that we have some outstanding examples, student examples to Socorro High School here tonight for another community purpose so that we can share not only with council, but with them as well, this presentation about their high school and about the success of their high school. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. León.
Mayor Council, this is a project that we've been pursuing for almost two years with respect to the up to honoring the baseball champions of Socorro High School. We presented this petition to Texas. They accepted. And let me tell you that we are the first city in their region in jurisdiction of more than nine counties. Not even Paso has implemented this type of project, which is a city pride sign honoring significant members of the city. This is the type of... We installed two different types of signs. One of them within the city, the entrances. And the big one is on the alleyway. The location of those signs where obviously all the entrances to the city from north to south, south to north, and from east to west. On I-10, obviously, North Loop, having hidden Socorro Road from... This is one of the signs entering from the Paso on Socorro Road, on the same road by entering from San Luis San Luis. This is another sign at the entrance of the city from the Paso, also Socorro Road, entering from Clay. This is on North Loop, entering from the Paso. And this is entering from Clay. This is on Horizon Boulevard, coming from Horizon City. This is on I-10, entering from the Paso, from east, from west to east. And this is entering from Faz, from east to west. So of signs were nine. Any questions?
I would like to say that I congratulate whoever designed the signs. They're very nice. It does speak our city, but the others. Do you think we have a state baseball championship team?
Mayor, can we give you a copy of your presentation for the R-3?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir.
The other thing I would ask is that coming in from Socorro Road from Paso to Socorro, there is a... As you can see in the picture, there's a tree that's extending into the right wing.
It's already got very...
Yeah, we noticed that.
Yeah, now.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next up, we have a presentation by the Socorro High School Student Council on plans to paint park prints on Alameda Street.
What do you call it? Thumbnail, some cats?
Thumbprint.
Thumbprint. Miss? Miss? Would you identify all of your team?
Yes. Okay, well, we are Socorro High School Student Council. My name is Lala Chacon. I'm a junior and this year is student body president.
My name is Ruben Carrosa and I'm a junior as well at Socorro High School.
My name is Rosa May Palomar and I'm a sophomore at Socorro High School.
My name is Maduski Randa and I'm also a junior at Socorro High School.
My name is Perla Galindo and I am a junior at Socorro High School. And our presentation today is about the beautification project we have come up with for the strip of Alameda that is in our campus.
Well, as student council, well, first of all, we're open to all students. What we do is we encourage leadership, fellowship, and team building. We organize school events and, of course, promote school spirit and community service. Our beautification project, the purpose of it is to build school spirit in our school and in the community. We want to beautify the street of Alameda, which is in front of our campus, and it will modernize our campus while making a statement. We're going to stand out and show everybody that they're in Bulldog country. This was inspired by the minor pick that UTEP painted on their campus.
The street of Mesa, when you're driving by the campus.
And that's about the size that we would want, one of our park prints.
Okay, so right here we have the top view of Socorro High School. Right here we have Alameda. And our plan is to have Paul John westbound, Westbound on Alameda, in front of our school.
This is a close-up of the street. And we are asking for at least four big park prints to be put in on the street.
And to see a closer view, this would benefit our campus, not only our campus, but also our community because we have, as completely as Opus and our Socorro Middle Bulldogs as well. So therefore, when students see these park prints in the school, they enter Socorro or they use Socorro, they're motivated to work for the community. It reminds them of where they come from, gives them pride in the community, and to be proud of where they come from.
Well, our question were, well, we would really like for you to approve for at least four parks to be drawn on Alameda Avenue. If approved, what would be our next step on this project? Do we have to contact Texas? Do we need any special permits? Would we need to go out and talk to someone in the city to help us approve or something?
If cost... If you can, would you be able to just help us for financial assistance with the cost? Or how much would it cost us for us to go out and paint the park itself?
Our next question would be, who would do the work? Or we were wondering if students such as ourselves can volunteer our time to save money? And what materials we would need? Paint and closing off roads? And also financial assistance or suggestions from y'all?
Do you already know? Do you already have a cost?
No.
We would be happy to do that.
Well, that's what we would ask you, if you guys could help us with the year of the past. We would be partnering, laboring, and...
Give us financial advice and assistance.
Can we provide assistance with the rich and with the poor student?
It's great that you bring this up because, you're right, beautification, I mean, it just adds something to the school aesthetically, you know, pleasing. It's a bit built, right? The UTEP did, you know, was incredible. However, I don't think y'all have been out there recently. But I think that they went with a dark color. If you go buy it now, it's kind of like almost black now. So maybe when we look at the design concept of this park, maybe want to start off with a lighter color. So with the normal traffic, it gets darker, just with age and time. Because if you go out right now and look at that UTEP sign, it started a little bit more sort of black than that bright orange that was first applied. So just some ideas for the walk. And yes, this, what Reyes is right, the council actually has talked about it, but not for Socorro High School. We were actually, we first started looking into it at the elementary schools where the crosswalks were at. And she's correct, she and Piedad, who's our public works director, who can give you a wealth of information, will make sure we hook you up with him. He actually went to some vendors to get some cost estimates. I'm sure you all can do it, you know, paint something on there, but it would be very timbered. Just with regular traffic, San Alameda would rub away probably within a month or two. But looking at something more permanent, which is, there's companies out there, what they do is, you buy the design from them, they manufacture it. And then what they do is they bring it out already in pre-cut forms. They lay it on the road and they burn it into the road so that it adheres. And that's why it's permanent and it lasts about a year, a year or two before it starts cooking off. So we kind of have already ventured there. And I think it's a great idea that y'all are bringing it. I think we can really move on, especially since we have some background that everybody has to look at for their elementarys. But again, I think if you all kind of taking the lead on it, we could probably start with Socorro High School. And kind of that'd be the first project before we move into the other campuses. Cost-wise, it's expensive. It's not a cheap endeavor. I would imagine, just from the estimates I saw, when you're looking at four parks, you're probably looking at a roughly about sixty, seventy thousand. Because you have to, again, these are pre-cut forms, they're by a contractor, they come out. But again, it's right to guess for the city's assistance, you know, where you all spearheaded, you all provide the leadership. And with working with the city, maybe we can, you know, get this project going. Who would do the work and be a contractor, you know, because you're dealing with a state highway? I'm sure the school district or the city wouldn't want to be liable to leave a child out there trying to paint something on the streets. So we would get professionals to do that. And then I think about material. I think what your next step would probably do is bring it back to this council for an actual agenda item so we can actually take action on it. Because the way it's presented now, it's just a presentation. And if this council chooses to, we can bring it back at the next meeting as an actual agenda item. And then we'll take an actual vote on it moving forward and that's how it would work. And then from there, I mean, it's partnership.
Mr. G.
So I hope I answered your question.
Mayor, Council, it's on the agenda for action later on.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda. It's for action to support that they have our endorsement to take Texas.
Can you tell me what number it is?
What number is it?
Number eight.
Number eight.
Mayor, can I ask you a question? Have you all met the senior superintendent at the support services?
No, sir, this is our very first step coming to you all. We haven't discussed it with our district yet.
Would you identify the two students that say?
Oh. My name is Diana Moi and I'm the student executive director at Socorro High School. And this is my husband supporting our student council.
I think you need to take it to your board, you know, also because it's, you know... They have a final say, so, you know, you all can come to us and we can approve it. But you know, your board has the ultimate word on this. You know, this being that you all are students, you know, you're trying to do something for the school district. I think in fact it's very important that you enjoy your board, very important. But I don't see a problem with it, you know, I think they'll support you. And they have a lot of resources, they have a lot of people, they know a lot, you know... Their support services, it's huge, you know. You're talking, you believe in say dollars I work at the church and all of this. Mr. Ito could be super, super helpful to them.
Thank you. And also I think that we already have the information. Gathered, break your person, you and you share. And with Mr. Ito, the process.
And just for clarification, this is a state highway considered. This isn't a school district street, this isn't a city street. So the school district doesn't have a finance office. And in fact, anybody can take the lead on it. I like the fact that you came to the city because the city does need to paint streets. And so that's the reason that we have the expertise. For instance, we go to school district, they'll probably, you know, we started from scratch where as a city, since we deal with streets on a daily basis. And we had people in personnel district do that, or lay down the streets. We have the knowledge of how this should apply to how the last few years and how they paint it. So I think coming to the city first was your best option. And again, we have done a lot of homework on it. Seamus Rodriguez has inherited it because he could really tell you who are, who we've been talking to, who the state uses. And going back to, because of the amount that it costs, just like the all informations that we all walk away and wanting exactly what the center are, you would probably, if the council takes action on it tonight, then the next step would be the administration would then vote of the street together, find out the cost estimates. It's going to be over what's minimum amount, which means we're going to have to go out to bid for it. And there'll be, there's like a twenty-day publishing of the paper so we can hire a contractor to do this. And then there'll be also this work in conjunction with Texas Department of Transportation to find out what minimum requirements are. Because normally you would say the state have a little bit higher quality measures. But that's usually go out to a contractor because they feel the ball pass, you know, and we just kind of provide the financial assistance. And so again, it's going to be up to the council and those various steps. And then after the council then selects the contractor, then it's just letting them build, you know, letting them design it and...
And also, this was to tell where the cost would be right, to do more cost.
Well, Mayor, 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 you know, there's an axiom for saying, imitation is the sincerest form of flattery. And we'll inaugurate our park. And this type of parks, because it'll be Bulldog Championship Park, that's its name. And going on a view for having the park there as well will be a great place for, to set the tone, if you will, for that park, before they enter. And so that's another place that this would work extremely well.
Well, again, Mr. Martin, be very careful, go to your board. Okay. You have to go to your board. I'm giving you a heads up. You have to go to your board, I'm giving you a heads up.
No, no, why then, obviously that we want
Yes, because you do have a superintendent and, you know, he is the one that's responsible. You will probably, you know, if the city wants to take the lead, I'm okay, take it away from you all to do the cost, I'm okay and work with you all. But the superintendent has the last word for the cost. If, if it goes, if it goes with you all, if you all do it, he wants, you know, he, he is the superintendent, you know, he does have a say with the students. Now, like Mr. Gander said, I do agree with Mr. Gander, we could take the lead, you know, and, and do the, uh, do the cost, I understand that. But, you know, you do have a board over there, so.
Right, and we'll do it as well as a courtesy so that the, the present win, hopefully this, this happens.
Um, we are not trying to take the lead from you, that's not true. The fact that we already looked into it for different schools and schools, doesn't mean we want to take our lead. This is, this part is a test one, not, okay, it's not true, we don't want to take it.
And when I think, my students and myself, we understand that we want to build that partnership between the school and the city so that we can work together and make it happen.
Good, right. Okay. So, again, going back to the cost, because like you've got such a great deal, you know, it's, it's just like the signs before, where you see these signs go up. It's about the civic pride in our community, you know, and that's what I'm most about, true cost. Um, I think Mary Gander's right, you know, that you inform your board, back in the day, it's gonna be about that, okay? And from my idea, the school district doesn't have much money because of the state legislation. So they're gonna say, whatever idea, however, we're not able to finance. And I think that's why you came to the city is, is, is more of the cost, you know, it's a good stage. And at least, you know, I'm sure I'm showing it in the way I'm talking, but, you know, the reason I like this project is, is I know we can assist. And, and I love the fact that you are exploring and, and you brought this idea on your own. We've talked about it, you know, but we haven't actually implemented it out of the projects. But the idea of you all coming here and saying, we wanna, we wanna, we wanna get this done, we need your help, I see greats, you know, and I see that's what we're here for.
And, um, I, I, um, I stopped walking to the end here, instead of getting out of the You bring it home from Socorro High School.
Anyway, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna take it, I'm gonna take it a step further, okay? Gander Recycling and Support Iron and Metals will donate the first thousand dollars to the project.
Wow, thank you. That's excellent.
We, we, we want to do that.
I tell, so you've got another total population of going to business out there. And our local businesses take, they're making some effort and having civic pride in their community.
And I'm pretty sure if you
You'll get more money out of this.
These other businesses around here, they'll help you out and especially the city council asks for help. You know, I think, uh, I think the money will start coming.
And, and, real quick, is, is there a timeline you all are looking at to try and have this completed? Because I know sometimes when we get near graduation and some people are trying to finish their year and And I know you all get your, your class grades, I don't remember who's actually here this afternoon, but So what is there telling, a timeline you all are looking at? Well, we're mostly, you're all here for this.
We're all juniors.
We're juniors and we're all in the classroom. I would really like to be here before I graduate. Like, just drive them to your last term of the class.
Yeah, and then when we come back, we'll see what, like, who are we looking for, starting our city's career.
Yeah, you are, I think, I think you can do this before you graduate. But I just want to say, I want to congratulate you, because we initially do a, a huge project, it's a big project. And we do a lot, a lot of, uh, young people are the future of Socorro. And I like that. People are getting involved together in this place, they did, and the community bettered, and we're proud of that. So, in my sincere heart, I want to give you congratulations, because we initially, we got a hundred percent support from the council.
Well, lastly, this is where, this was our inspiration from, this is like our motto this year. Is do not go where the path may lead, go instead where there is no path and leave no paw. And I want to thank you all for having us this evening and for supporting us, and we're very excited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Remember, make it better for all.
Yes.
Come check, come to check. Were there any ones that I thought we could have before we went on to check?
Thank you very much. Your attention, your attention.
Break the leg. Break the leg. Break the leg, you know what that means, right?
Thank you very much. Yes.
Break the leg.
Thank you.
No one, uh, no one signed up for public comment. So we're gonna go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Item number seven would be Second. Motion to approve by Doye Rodriguez, seconded by Jesse Gander. Mr. Madrid, yes, Andres Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Gander?
Yes.
Okay, the consent agenda is approved. Moving on to the regular agenda. Item number ten, discussion and action to approve travel request for the city manager to participate in T C Q mediation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, it was approved by Doye Rodriguez, seconded by Jesse Gander. Uh, Guillermo Madrid?
Yes.
Doye Rodriguez?
Yes.
Jesse Gander?
Yes.
Item is approved. Moving on to item number eleven, discussion and action to approve travel request for councilmen at large to participate in the T C Q mediation.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Jesse Gander?
Second.
Seconded by Doye Rodriguez, Guillermo Madrid?
Yes.
Doye Rodriguez?
Yes.
Jesse Gander?
Yes.
Okay. Item number eleven is approved. Moving on to item number twelve, discussion and action on the cooperative working agreement between the Alpasso County Sheriff's Department and the Socorro Police Department as it pertains to the Alpasso County Border Crime Initiative.
Mr. Sope. Mayor, Mayor Council, this is a, a, a working agreement where we're gonna share information across governmental entities. It already has a number of entities involved so that we can, uh, share information in both directions.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Jesse Gander, we have a second.
Second.
Seconded by Guillermo Madrid, Guillermo Madrid?
Yes.
Doye Rodriguez?
Um, yes.
Jesse Gander?
Yes.
Okay, item number twelve is approved. Moving on to item number thirteen, discussion and action on the inter-local agreement between Alpasso County, the city of Alpasso, the Socorro Police Department, and the Horizon Police Department as it pertains to Operation Stone Garden.
Mayor, Mr. Council, in this one, we actually get refunds. We get money to fund overtime for our police officers, we get vehicles in the profit, and this grant is good for one year.
A motion to approve by Doye Rodriguez?
Second.
Number seconded by Jesse Gander, Guillermo Madrid?
Yes.
Doye Rodriguez?
Yes.
Jesse Gander?
Yes.
Okay. Item number thirteen is approved. Moving on to number fourteen, that is discussion and action to review and consider potential opportunities and options for growth and expansion of the city's Socorro territory and service area.
Mr. Sope. Mayor Council, Mr. Leon has a presentation for you on annexation on it.
Uh, Mayor Council, this is a first step for a annexation, uh, project. The city of Socorro has, uh, two options. Number one, if we, we consider the conclusion of, uh, of the comprehensive master plan, we, but we have an inconvenience. We, we may be taking action after the third anniversary of, once the, the annexation is, is adopted. The second option that we have is, uh, if we consider this option, if we are gonna be annexing less than a hundred lots or trucks in our extraterritorial jurisdiction, uh, subject to be annexed within a two hundred, uh, within two miles of our corporate limits. Different options are, if we receive a petition of the fifty percent of the real, uh, property owners. Also, if we are subject, if the areas, areas subject to a industrial contract or strategic partnership agreement. If the areas is considered属colonial. And in addition to that, if we receive a petition from, uh, from the property owners, this is if we have the, the classification of general, general law. This, but this is not our case. If we consider this, uh, this, uh, step of the option of annexing less than three, less than, uh, a hundred lots or trucks, we need to make the, the, the analysis on the first, on the, the information from the central express district. We need to, to inform all the properties, the all the property owners, all the entities, uh, within the, uh, our jurisdiction on the proposed area. And first of all, these are the guidelines. Obviously, we need to define the procedure that the city wants to follow, which is, obviously without, without, uh, waiting until, uh, to the conclusion of the comprehensive master plan. We need to define the direction that the city wants to grow, which is, uh, we need to have a direction from our council. We need to identify the proposed annexation within our E T J. Once we have, uh, the definition of, uh, of the direction you want to grow, we need to prepare a proposed annexation plan showing the, the midst and bounds of, of the proposed area that would be developed by, by consultants and, and, uh, obviously the finance department. We got to have the information, unofficial information from the central express district, and we were going to be providing that, uh, from the cap. Once we have, uh, the trucks, we need to, to make a, an official notification to property owners and letting them know about the, the different steps of the, of the annexation process. We need to publish and coordinate the, the public hearings, uh, the first one before the planning zoning commission to get a recommendation to city council to proceed. On city council, we need to conduct a first calling public hearing, uh, that might be done, uh, by land department attorney. Secondly, we need to conduct a public hearing and the second, if, the second reading and adoption, that, uh, that will be the, the official document created by, by the attorney. And the final, the final steps, uh, would be the official notification of, uh, recording the, the, the new, uh, annex area. Uh, letting everybody know and creating the new boundaries of the city. This is the, one of the options is to grow to the south towards San Elizario and Clint. On this area, uh, we have ninety-nine trucks. More to them is agriculture. There are some sections that are small trucks. Not developed. Our option is, is to have a control of, uh, of the I T. This portion here is, uh, has been in, uh, in, uh, in Casa, uh, being annexed since the city was reactivated because this section originally owned by the city of Socorro was annexed by, by the city of Alpasso because of the water treatment land series. And this is, uh, the, the possible next step. This is the area where the, where, uh, the, in the pass of, uh, the community colleges. Thank you, sir. This is, uh, another section important because we have, uh, industrial businesses and, uh, commercial already in place. And at the same time, if we extend this, this, uh, if we include in, in this option, these two sections, not touching right now, the, this subdivision because we would see the ninety-nine trucks. But annexing just the, the, the frontage of, of, of I T. And at the same time, if we include this section here, we got ninety-four, ninety-four trucks. We are extending, this is within our, our, our annexation, our E T J, uh, annexation boundary.